We are opening now. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the planning board meeting for October 1st. How exciting. First order of business is open forum. First, we have Mike Green calling in due to geographical dislocation or whatever. And we're hoping that we can get it working so we can actually hear you later on, Mike. Does anybody else staff?
Just if anyone is here tonight for 11 Brookside Road, that applicant has requested withdrawal without prejudice for the board this evening. So withdrawal without prejudice due to a lack of effective quorum.
Madam Chair, just for public service announcements, reminder to commuters that frequent Oak Hill Road and Groton Road this week would be a good time to avoid that area. They're doing full depth reclamation, so through the intersection, there'll be detours and traffic delays in place. They started today, got a good start on it, but that would be consideration for the traveling public. And we ask people to travel slow in work zones, keep our workers safe, and that all businesses are open for normal hours of operation. And then also, the Mass DOT working with the resident engineers, we asked them to extend the project limits all the way up to the driveway of the O'Neill landscaping project that you previously approved. That was something that he was going to be doing, but they were there doing the work, so it was a matter of them going a little bit longer, and they did. The contractor agreed to do that. And O'Neill will have further conversations with him about his contribution towards some of the landscaping he had offered through correspondence. Instead of doing the paving, he's a landscape contractor. We are going to have to do some landscaping improvements after that project is, when everything is completed for infrastructure, so he's offered to be a part of that, which we think is very, which is a great trade-off because he's not a paving contractor. And then finally, Madam Chair, today's October 1st, so the town of Westford filed its notice of intent with the EPA for the next permit series of, for our stormwater management permit. That will be available online for people to look at. I'll try to get it online tomorrow on the Westford Engineering Department website. That's the permit that you'll, we'll reach out to you guys indirectly because of the things that you'll be including in your permits and your projects going forward that will make the water and natural resources in Westford better than they are today.
So it's, what you're proposing is effective today?
It was filed, it was, yeah. The selectmen approved it last week, and it was recorded with the EPA today. It's just the, it's the notice of intent. It's kind of like a, just a tax form type of a thing. It has all the things that you have to do, but we'll be working on the actual plan for that with the various departments that will be impacted by this new permit. And that's, this again is the permit that the EPA requires the town to have in order to discharge stormwater and melting snow into our natural resources, waters, streams, wetlands. And they're requiring that we clean it up before it gets there. So that's some of the things that we'll be doing in order to make Westford a better place to live.
Thank you. Josh, do you have anything?
I do. Just a reminder that we do have a town meeting coming up on the 15th, two weeks from today. Starts at seven o'clock. It's at the Abbott School.
That's a new time per vote of the previous town meeting. They changed the time to seven, seven thirty.
I will not be here, so you will be in charge.
Just one comment. Shortly after this board last met, there was a tragic story in town. Most people probably saw of a runner actually getting hit and killed near Technology Park. And it just made me reflect on the work that this board does with regard to, you know, sidewalk funds and lighting and things like that that come up before us. So it was just something that kind of struck home with me and, you know, made me think about the important work that this board does and made me reflect a little bit. So I want to comment on that.
Darren, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Darren, Mike, do you have anything for open forum?
Michael, you with us?
Yep.
I do, I do have a question for you, Mike. Did you have a hard stop time tonight?
Just after nine, nine P.M.
Okay. And a reminder that because we do have somebody remoting in, we do, all votes do have to be real call. Anybody from the audience open forum? If not, I would like to get on to our first public hearing. And I'm hoping we can get it done within 20 minutes so we can try and keep Mike on schedule. Welcome. I did watch the last meeting on cable TV, and I filled in the form, so I had.
Yep, the executed mullin form. Thank you for that.
I'm all, I'm all okay. And my understanding is the last time, basically. We're ready to vote on it, close the public hearing, but you decided to leave it open for town staff to...
A draft decision.
Draft decision. Okay. Yep, I got it. I know. My comment is just a reminder that it is preliminary. So even though in the draft, in the draft decision, it said that they voted three to one to approve the subdivision plan proposing a 23 lot open space residential that be final, the record confirmation on the number of houses and units allowed will be at the actual, when we get to the actual plan, not here. So I know that there were a few issues that they had asked you to take care of regarding safety on Nutting Road and lot sizes and things like that. So personally, I did have a couple comments. I just need to get out my ruler and confirm the lot lines that we, they did get to 200 feet. I am still concerned about the, on the conventional one, the validity of having the two streets going not where they are because they are directly in front of houses. And there's a difference in coming out in front of a house that's set back 50 or more feet from the road versus a house that's basically right on the edge of the right of way and the effect of glare. So I'll be interested in that and might not be so favorable. And just a reminder that one of the comments from engineering was that you have to let us know whether the roadways would remain private or be intended for public use. And personally, because of the number of houses and issues that we've had with other private ways, I strongly urge you to make this a public road, and I would be looking for a public road personally.
Kathleen, Kathleen Coyle, 73 Nutting Road, and that is the intent.
Okay, great. Perfect. So with that, basically just to approve the draft?
Yeah, so it's just if this board has any comments or changes. And we sometimes put a reminder comment at the end of the preliminary advisory comments, reminding them that it's, you know, preliminary, and we had something in previous preliminary decisions. If you want us to add that, it would be another number. It would just be advisory. We can do that. It's a simple change.
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
Okay. Do you, Darren, Dylan?
I will simply say that if this plan gets taken to the definitive stage, then I'll be very interested to see what we plan to do with sidewalks and access to and from the parcel based on comments that I think were made through the course of the meetings.
Either of you have any comments on the draft decision?
Looking forward to see what they come up with.
Great. Mike, do you have any comments on the draft decision?
Yeah, just a comment to add a provision that we advise the applicant to address the feasibility of construction on Lot 1, given the topography of both the cuts, roadway cuts, slope, and topography of Lot 1. I brought that up at the last meeting regarding the, you know, 20 to 25 foot cut at the entrance of that east west side entrance road.
Is this for the conventional or the open space?
For a conventional, again. This, these comments, we talked about lots 10 and 11 here in item 1 for the setbacks and so forth. But specific on Lot 1 and the roadway, roadway cut and topography of Lot 1 for both access and to that lot. So it should be easily addressed at definitive, but I'd like it addressed, so.
We could, we could just modify advisory note number 10. That's more generic. Can add that.
Which preliminary advisory comments here?
Yep. We can incorporate that. That's fine.
Okay.
Like specifically Lot 1 or?
Yeah, we should be, if he has a specific lot that he's concerned about, we should let the applicant know that so they can address that particular lot.
So it's particularly Lot 1 or?
Yep.
Or topography and roadway cut. Okay.
Is that it, Mike?
Was there something in here for the glare in the conventional?
Yes.
It's generic. Number 6, board advises the applicant to address head glare concerns raised by butters.
Good. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I think, and just again, because it's preliminary and it's meant to guide you guys, I think it's, you know, one thing has been brought up by, you know, the audience and some of the board members is access to the open space and the design. So really kind of maximizing that design for access to the open space and, you know.
Yep, functionality of it.
Yeah, functionality.
Okay. I don't think we really need to hear comments because we actually heard everything before the vote. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Just if there, if the public is here and the hearing is still open, maybe...
Or just on the draft decision.
Okay, yep. Right.
Any comments on the draft decision if you've had the chance to look at it?
Nope.
Okay. Motion to close?
So moved.
Second. Gary?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Kate, aye. Dylan?
Aye.
I'm gonna learn your names. Okay, so we've closed public hearing. A motion to approve the draft decision as modified tonight?
So moved. Second.
Gary?
Aye.
Mike?
Question for process. We already took the vote on the preliminary.
Okay.
And I was, I voted in the against it. I'm fine from a document standpoint. So Jeff, it's more a question. What are we, we just voting on the form of the document at this point?
That's, that's correct. So you could be opposed to approving it, but you could be fine with the format and the content of the decision.
Okay. Aye. Thank you.
What's your vote then?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Kate, aye.
Aye.
There we go. Good luck.
Thank you.
Onto the real work.
Have a great night.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you.
If I could, who seconded that? Okay. I thought you...
He seconded to close.
Yeah, the, on the draft.
Gary.
Gary.
That's right.
Next public hearing item is 71 Powers Road. Are they in here?
Yes.
I saw Paul up there.
Yeah, I just waved him in. So how do we get, I can't scroll past this, these plans.
I'm trying to, we're on 71 Powers Road.
Yes.
And I am going to recuse myself because I am in a butter. So.
Are you sure?
And just, I'm trying to get things moving along because I'm trying to get through all the public hearings by nine o'clock because of Mike's schedule.
Okay. Okay. All right. All in favor?
Of what?
Aye. Thank you. 71 Powers Road. While Greg Roy from the Chauvin Dillis puts up the plan, I'll introduce myself. I'm Paul Alf, and I represent the applicant. We haven't seen the board. We have not been before the board since July. Why is that? Not because we don't love you. It's because we've been before the Conservation Commission. Notwithstanding the property has 13 acres of land, there are wetlands in the property that limits the envelope within which we can operate. This is pretty much like the last plan that you, we've formally submitted to you. It actually shows less paved area than in the first plan we submitted. And every time we've gone to the Conservation Commission, we've reduced the footprint of the property a bit to decrease the work in the wetlands buffer. And each time we go to the commission, the commission says, "Almost." You get to move it back. So what essentially happens is that the retaining wall in the parking lot gets pushed in further and further away from the wetlands. And since we've lost, seen you, we've lost one unit off the end of this building. The roadway has been pushed up in this direction to get away from the riparian zone and from the wetlands. And next, we're about to lose another unit back here. We showed that to the Conservation Commission, and the project is getting smaller. And there's another plan we're working on now where the projects can get smaller still. Whether we lose some building space or not, we're not quite sure yet, but we are going to end up having less paved area than we do now. So what's been the consequence of a reduction in the paved area? Well, a couple of things. One, when we were here last July, you reminded us about the parking requirement of one space per 200 square feet. So there's an awful lot of parking that's required for this use, notwithstanding that in our client's experience and the experience of other users, this type of operation doesn't generate much in the way of traffic and parking. Typically, these types of operations is no, very little. We'll never say no, never say zero, but very little customer visits to the property. Most of the deliveries and meeting with customers is done at customer sites and offsites, so these don't generate an awful lot of traffic. So what we have proposed is that under the bylaw, you can apply for a special permit, so it's not necessary to construct all of the parking spaces all at once. If you can show a plan that you could construct the parking spaces, and if in actual experience, the building commissioner makes a determination that the parking is inadequate, then you have to build the parking spaces. So the most recent application you have shows a parking deck on the property to compensate for the additional parking spaces that we believe we will never have to construct. But on the other hand, we meet the requirements of the bylaw by showing they can be constructed, and afforded by the building inspector, they would be constructed. So that's before you. We also have the engineering department's letter. We received that last week. Greg is going over, he's been over the letter. He's going to work with the engineering department. There's nothing in the engineering department's letter that's insurmountable. It's just one of those things that they need to go through, make some tweaks to the plan. And ultimately, as we get to the final plan where we're going to satisfy the Conservation Commission next time we see them, then we will have the final plan upon which all the engineering changes will be shown, and we'll have the final plan will be good for the Conservation Commission and the planning board. So basically, the layout of the project remains the same. The number of units is reduced somewhat. The paved area has been reduced significantly. We're requesting the special permit for the parking and the engineering review. We feel next time through, we should get a, we should get an A as opposed to the B plus that we got in the last engineering review. What did I forget?
That's a good summary. I do appreciate getting the comments. I know we have, the plan's been, as Paul has summarized, the plan's been moving around a little bit. And I do, but I do appreciate having the engineering review comments out in front of us so that we can kind of put everything together macroscopically with things we're getting from the commission, anything that we might get from you this evening, as well as things we have from you in the past, and the engineering comments to try to take care of this thing. One more crack, so.
The other thing we did is back in July, there were some concerns from, I think, the board members, and at least from one of butter, regarding what uses could come to the property. And we promised to give you a description of many of the uses which are prohibited, and also the rules and regulations. We forgot to submit them in time, but we submitted them today. We know it's not within the timeframe, but you have them now, so it'll be part of the record. I won't go over them because it's a long list of things that are prohibited, but we finally submitted them. Sorry they didn't get in in time for us to be able to digest them this evening.
Great. That's a good summary. Anything from staff? Jeff?
I'm going to defer to Josh on this.
Okay.
The planning department hasn't gotten these plans as of yet. This is the first time we have laid eyes on it. So as there are changes, we will have to take a look at those changes.
Yep.
Great. We're in the same situation, although we, our review does capture some of the highlights of the project. I don't, as you can see from our comments, I don't know that we share council's optimism on the impacts of traffic. And once you especially discuss tonight the parking and the use, the type of use, we'll have a better handle on that. We are, we are recommending that the project be reviewed for its traffic impacts to the neighborhood because that's your discretion to waive.
All right. Go to the board for comments. Gary?
I'm just concerned about the access getting on the Powers Road with the traffic, like you were just saying. So I'm, I'm just a little concerned about that. So I'd like to see like an impact study or something if we decide to go that route.
Now, is that something, Paul, because I know it's referenced in, in the traffic impact studies, referenced in the engineering notes?
Right.
Is that something that's part of this review process automatically because of the size, or do we have to specifically call that out, request it? I mean, we're still kind of working on the final size, too.
Can I ask a very specific question on this? By having to move the road up, what is the distance between the midline of your exit from the property and the midline of the road that intersects Powers Road? How, what's...
Yep.
Because while it's not a road, it's an entrance, and there is some guidelines for that.
So I'm rough here.
Yeah, that's fine.
But we're roughly 50 feet.
Yeah, I mean, so, correct me if I'm wrong, bylaw calls for two roads having 200 feet?
Roads.
150 feet.
I think it was 100.
150, right. And while, again, it's a...
Not a road, but...
Not a road. It's a driveway entrance into a facility. It's a pretty close shot to that road.
That's correct. And that is one of, we may comment to that as a consideration. It is not, you know, whether it's in the regulation or not, it's not something that is desirable with a neighborhood, you know, the size that it, that they have down here. There'll be vehicles coming and going all day. And, you know, without the correct alignment of the driveway with the road, or, you know, some other recommendations from a transportation engineer, how to prevent the left turn accidents that are potential, or have a potential there. But, you know, that's just something that, you know, that's why there are experts that do this.
Yep, yep.
And I guess, and my follow-up to that, too, is that's a state road, right, Paul?
Correct.
So is that, does the state have their own criteria for such an intersection, or that would they?
Mass DOT, when they get an access permit application from the applicant, will be extremely thorough in its review for access. They will look at everything. And then they'll pass it on to their colleagues and have them look at everything. And they'll go find a third group of colleagues, and they'll all look at it.
Yeah, you're exaggerating.
It's just, there's two rounds of reviews. And Mass DOT will go through everything from environmental impacts to traffic and accessibility, site distance. They take their roads really very seriously, especially the volumes, you know. They'll want to know all the...
Septic for the, for the lot is in the front yard, in between Powers Road and...
Last time we were before you, that was the case.
Yep.
And that was one of the things we revised as part of, from what we heard from you folks.
Yep.
Because there was a conflict between our landscape and proposal in the front. So we've actually redesigned that now to be in the back, completely in the back, the primary and the reserve to be in the back on the parking.
Okay. On the state highway question, based on the shorter frontage off of Powers Road, is that something that gets considered as well by the state in terms of if they ever wanted to widen that road, the feasibility of doing that?
I've never, I've never seen that to be germane in terms of traffic because site, frontage varies from city to city, town to town.
Yep.
And some, you know, have 20-foot setbacks, 10-foot setbacks.
Okay.
So I've never, I've never seen that as an issue.
Okay.
If the state, if the state did want to widen it, they would just do an, taking it and widen it.
Okay.
But the setback to the property line is still, is it about 46 and a half feet or so?
Right.
So, I mean, even, most takings fall well, well below that.
Sure of that. Great.
And even the way we have the proposed roundings and things could accommodate that.
Great. That is a good question. What is it that triggers the need for the traffic review? Is it just the engineering department's letter, or is something more formal required?
Well, your jurisdiction is in 9.3A, 0.6D, and 6, 6D, pedestrian vehicular access traffic assessment.
So it's up, the threshold is, is it 20 vehicles per...
5,000 gross square feet of building.
So we would first either have to submit something from a traffic expert saying we don't meet the threshold, or if we do, we would have to submit some additional data.
I would invite that this is, you know, this is certainly going to make it a lot easier going through the DOT access permit process. You know, if they have, if they have a traffic study, just it would make it go smoother for them as well.
So what I anticipate is, as part of that process where we're going to respond to the engineering department's questions, we'll get our traffic information to the engineering department. And either we won't hit the threshold, or if we do, we'll have to submit additional information. I think at the same time, I'd like to think that the engineering review will support our conclusions regarding parking demand, and then we don't necessarily meet the standard one space per 200 square feet, which essentially applies to most of the uses in the town of Westford. And that will help support our special permit request as well.
When you were before Conservation, you showed them the plan with the, with the parking deck in case that was needed, and so they were aware of that, and they factored that into their feedbacks.
Yeah. And quite frankly, the Conservation Commission really isn't all that concerned about what's happening on top of asphalt.
Gotcha.
So, but they understood that we had to do that because we pleaded with them, "Why do we have to go back even further? You're forcing us to build a parking deck here."
Yeah.
And they were unbelievably unsympathetic. So we'll just continue to make the wall...
Yeah, just to continue on the traffic, too, I think, you know, exacerbated now by the fact that it is kind of getting pushed in is, you know, I'd like to have engineering certainly take a look at the turning inside that.
Right. Yep. That was a comment.
We have asked, we have asked that, and I'm sure the fire department echoes their fire prevention plan and their efforts on the property to gauge. So I think, you know, central to the traffic and the parking issue are the use and the use group of this property. And without some clarity there, it becomes a challenge for us to understand what kinds of traffic volumes there will be now or in the future. So without any kind of a thorough understanding of what all those little squares will be filled with, it's, you know, we're it's, it's, you know, we're shooting in the dark, and so that, that, our instinct at that point is to be as conservative as possible and anticipate the worst-case scenarios. You know, that's, if, without understanding what those uses will be, and then understanding that they will be the same uses tomorrow as they are today when you approve it, you know, is the challenge for us, in the ways we're kind of, we're just, we're feeling around in the dark in terms of that, because everything we do, the traffic generation, through our I T E manuals, and, you know, making, having an opinion on how many people will be, how many spaces will be needed to park, you know, customers, equipment, you know, employees, it's all based on what the uses will be.
We're prepared to respond to all of that.
Okay. Mike, do you have any comments?
Yeah, kind of taking a, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
I guess more a question either for the applicant or staff in taking a step back, even at the point of C B A variance. The, you know, it had certain assumptions for use. It had certain assessments for meeting or not meeting parking, and now we've got a proposed parking deck to at least make meet minimum parking requirements. And I understand for the applicant's memo, we can waive that, but as it relates to intensity of use on the parcel, which I, is part of, has the, has the scope of this as it relates to the variance changed?
So, I guess that's, if I may, that's a, this project has been a bit of a moving target. What we would envision, if they move closer towards an approval, we would obviously have to reconcile any differences with the zoning board decision. They would have to go back to the zoning board if they needed any modifications. And I think there was even a provision called out in the zoning board decision that allowed for such an opportunity, especially if it was deemed minor enough, without a second public hearing. But if it's deemed substantial, then they might need a new public hearing if the modifications were too severe.
Okay, but that's the basis of which we're here today, obviously, is that variance, but at least one parameter of it, so.
That's correct.
The second question, more specific, and I, I may have missed it in the narrative or misunderstood it, but there was some comment about parking in the units themselves, is that correct?
Right. There's, part of the proposal is that one of the spaces per unit be indoors in a garage.
But the current plan, is that envisioned in the current plan, because it doesn't show that access? And if it does, it then blocks a parking space at the unit, or am I misunderstanding that, Paul?
No, the current plan, the latest plan does show it, but since the, the space behind it is going to be exclusively the property of the, of that unit owner, they have absolute control over, over the vehicles in the outdoor space and the indoor space.
Again, we don't know uses, the public, private types of uses, right? There is a public, so are we, can we count those and say you can't park here because it's tenant parking? So, I'm just, getting back to the overall number, Paul, I'm just concerned that now we're, you know, slicing up parking yet again, right?
So, we're, it's gonna be incumbent upon us to get some more parking data to you for somebody who, as Paul said, is a parking expert, to tell you what the projections are for these, these types of facilities.
That's fine, general use means any type of stuff. But, okay, again, I guess just consistent concerns on, you know, overall intensity of use on this parcel and how we're trying to, you know, fit it, so to speak, so, okay.
Dylan?
I'm good.
Yeah, I think, so clearly, you guys have a lot of feedback, and you've made some changes, and there are some more changes in the works. Obviously, you've got the engineering comments, many of which are based on the current design, which will change a little bit. And you can obviously incorporate a lot of those. I think, obviously, the major concern is traffic impact on the road, as well as internally. You've seen, obviously, you guys have seen tonight, so I guess you're waiting, and then, oh, you have a, someone from the audience?
Yes. Kate Hollister, twenty-five Vinebrook Road, member of the Vinebrook Trust. I have a question about the wall in the back. According to the plans, it's eight feet tall, or the exposed part is eight feet. And I'm just thinking, given the layout, that's kind of dangerous even with a chain link fence there. So, I was wondering if you can set this building more into the ground to try and bring it lower, so you don't have to have such a high wall?
Through you, I'll respond. We actually have done that, so between this plan and this plan, which is the one we showed to Conservation Commission last week, again, not before your board yet, so I do apologize, we have lowered the site uniformly to reduce the size of that wall, so that was definitely something. And that was also a comment raised by, by the engineering department as well, so we'll certainly have that. The next plan revision, we'll address that issue. We are trying to get things as low as we can. And there's, I mean, I guess that's the one good thing about moving the wall a little bit further back, is we have an opportunity to shrink that a little bit, so that we're taking advantage of that. Sort of a byproduct of that process with the Conservation Commission is to reduce that wall a little bit, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Rick, anything further from staff?
Mr. Sterrett brought up a question. Has the, has the board had a chance to do a site visit?
I have not, no, we haven't.
And would that be helpful?
Sure.
Sure.
At all?
Yeah, Jeff, do you want to coordinate that, or Josh through the applicant?
Yeah.
Would that be, am I on hold?
No, it's a, it's a lovely site. I think it will help the board understand that whatever we propose will be an improvement over what is currently there.
What is the speed limit on Powers Road? Is it, is it thirty, or is it forty? Do you know? Off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I.
There is a, excuse me, Mr. Chair, there has been a Powers Road for our commuting public. It's wise to know, is one of the few roads that actually has a regulated speed. I believe it is forty miles an hour.
In that section goes thirty, thirty-five, forty, thirty-five.
Yeah, and those, fine, thank you, those, but that means that a speed study, and that would explain why it goes thirty, thirty-five, forty. They're actually based on operator behavior in the eighty-fifth percentile, but DOT has done a regulated speed out there, and they posted in that section, I think, is forty, right?
Clearly, traffic is a big concern.
Yeah, and I think that that is something that we need to demonstrate with some, with some data, with some expertise. I'd like to think that the next time we see you, that the engineering issues will be resolved with the engineering department, and we'd like to think that their concern as regard to the number of parking spaces and traffic will likewise be resolved through the same mechanism. And if we end up in one of those blank spaces where there isn't much happening, but the, but the engineering department is happy, we, we hope we can compel somebody to start working on a draft so we can have a lovely productive meeting when we see you again.
And, Mr. Chair, that would come in the form of a traffic scoping letter. I would anticipate that, that is the prelude to a traffic impact assessment study if that's the first step. So, a traffic scoping letter, which is, and guidelines we're preparing, and the contents of a traffic scoping letter are available to council and the designer. And that, that will tell us what their, their theories are on the, on traffic and impacts, and then we make an assessment.
Okay.
And that, which may be as a peer review, if you want to consider establishing a fifty-three G account for that, if you, if timeline is an issue here.
So, the process is, so we submit the traffic, traffic scoping letter to the engineering department, reviews it, and either makes recommendations that everything is fine the way it is, or they make, they provide a scope for further traffic study?
We would then, we would, the engineering department doesn't make that decision, the planning board does, but I'm thinking if time is sensitive here, then it, it would go quickly if it were, just sent, if it was reviewed by the, a peer review, our peer-reviewed traffic consultants, as opposed to, you know, if we get it and we can't make any heads or tails out of it, or make any sense, or sound traffic, transportation judgments on the content, that, that may preclude a step of you having to come back to the board and then establishing the peer review consultants.
Does it make sense for us to take an action tonight to set funds available in case?
You could authorize the staff work with the engineering department to, to the applicant, to establish a fifty-three G account in case it's needed, so it could delay an extra meeting. Protection.
Yeah, it's all, it's just occurring to me as we speak, but I think that would be the right.
So, motion to authorize staff to work with the applicant to establish a fifty-three G account in the event that it's necessary for, if needed, this item.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Gary?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren says aye. Dylan?
Aye.
All right. Rick?
Yep.
Okay, that's helpful.
All right, great. And I think, obviously, the, the next set of plans that we'll see will incorporate the latest, the, the most recent stuff from the conservation.
Absolutely.
Next set of plans will be the final plans. We know what we need to do with ConScum.
So, is there a pleasure of the board, some, yeah, Mike, go ahead.
Hey, Darren?
Yep.
Yeah, there was, there was one quick question. It may have changed from the plans in terms of front landscaping. On Powers Road, there's at least retention basins, and I think there used to be a filtration basin there, so I don't see that. It may have been on the previous plan in terms of a planting plan. Is that available in the plan set, or coming?
It's coming. We appreciate that, that comment, and you'll have that in the updated plan set.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments from the audience? Is there a motion to, is the, would post, would continuing to the next meeting make sense for you guys, or would that be too soon?
Rick says yes.
Is that October fifteenth?
No. Twenty-second, right?
Correct, October twenty-second.
All right.
Which could dovetail nicely if our, since our transportation consultant will be here for, anticipate them being here for Spalding on that in any way.
All right. Is there a motion to continue?
Just if I may, if we need any extensions.
They're forthcoming.
Okay, great, thank you. Motion to continue P B eighteen seventeen for seventy-one Powers Road to the next planning board meeting here. Yes, October twenty-second, meeting room two oh one.
You have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Gary?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren says aye. Dylan?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
We are now ready for our next public hearing, which is twenty-two Town Farm Road for a site plan review.
And I need to recuse myself from this.
Okay. Thank you. Now, as I stated before, Mike really needs to leave around nine o'clock, so I'm gonna try and divvy up the time. And so, we'll see how far we get. With luck, we will get it done.
I mean, Chris, the public can't see it from there, so.
Yeah.
Do you need an easel?
Well, we need a bunch of them, and you may not even need them. I just brought them so you'd have these, we can pass them around, whatever, because they're larger scale, but whatever you want.
It would be nice to get them electronically, because I know Mike can't see them. Okay, all righty.
They're, they're back in July, it went out.
Okay. Now, the first order of business is to talk about the filing fee. No, no fee, no talk.
That's right. So, what we've, what we're proposed to do is to volunteer significant work as part of stormwater control features that aren't required by the bylaw. There's no exterior construction outside, that dictates the requirement for stormwater, stormwater management permit or construction in the parking lot. Our client has submitted a comprehensive list of the types of things that it'd like to do out in the site, as well as a plan indicating where that work would be done. And because of the voluntary nature of that work, as well as the, as well as the fact that the building is staying right where it is, it's an existing building, it's a modification of an existing site, and the board does not have a separate fee schedule for a modification of an existing site in an existing building, for those reasons, we've requested a waiver of the site plan review, refu fees.
And in the past, we've stated we would not forgive the entire amount, but we would be willing to discuss a reduction based on the amount of work that you are gonna, that you have coordinated with engineering for stormwater management, so you want to talk about that?
So, we submitted a, an estimate of what the work would, would cost. The board saw that estimate before the last meeting. The board.
Did we? I don't recall seeing it, but.
Oh, sure. It was in the, it was in the package during the summer.
Very last page of the summary.
And the total dollar amount was seventy-five thousand nine hundred dollars. And I think at the last meeting, you quibbled about it, it's a nickel here, a dime there, and some of the things, but nevertheless, it's a substantial sum of money that they're proposing to, to bring to the improvements to the property. Now, some of the work has already been done, and the other work will continue to, to proceed to make the site better. But part of the cleanup of the site has already resulted in some of these improvements being, being in place.
Engineering, you have worked with them on this?
Yeah, we've been through a couple iterations of their proposed strategy for making improvements, and I think they've given enough here, and if the language is appropriate in the decision, they've given us enough to work with them, to make the improvements that they're talking about, and we will gladly report back to the planning board in the event that we find that they are not making the improvements to our satisfaction, or if we are, if, if Mr. Yule is of the opinion that something is not necessary, but we are of the opinion that it is, working with staff, including the, our planner and our conservation agent, and summarizing our opinions, we'll definitely come back and let you know that, you know, we're not getting what, what it is that you desire, and that is what I think Mr. Yule already wants to do, is a better-looking property, but a property that has less of an impact on a water resource that's very important to the town, Stony Brook.
So, do you have any kind of a written agreement as to the type of work? And is this work that would go above and beyond what would be considered as normal maintenance?
Apart from what's in the decision itself.
Well, we have the supplemental package that was submitted describing the nature of the work, as well as the plan, and that, those items have been incorporated into the draft decision. So, that, I think, is the standard that our client would be required to meet or exceed.
It's twenty-five pages of details.
So, I think, Madam Chair, if I may, they, what, what, and I, and I understand the reasons for some of the ambiguity in, in the proposed improvements, because each thing is very site-sensitive and so on and so forth, so I anticipate that we'll make that work to our advantage.
Okay.
And, and going, our back and forth with, with Chris Yule and twenty-two Farm Road will be. Yule and twenty-two Farm Road will be engaging.
So there, there was a number thrown or put in some, somewhere, like reducing the amount to thirty-one hundred dollars or something like that, I just vague that number.
There was some vague recollection of about one-third, I think, Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't you estimate the fee to be approximately, was it ninety-three hundred or?
Um.
So a third of that would be thirty-one hundred?
Um, the amount I calculated was ninety-two hundred, ninety-three hundred? Um, uh, ninety-three hundred, uh, um, I do recall, uh, thirty-one hundred was, uh, batted around, I, uh, am not sure if that was ever actually, uh, landed on, but I.
I know, that's what they were asking for in the past, so.
But I think what we were asking for in the past was twenty-five hundred dollars, and make it twenty-five hundred dollars, we have a deal.
I like thirty-one.
Right, probably do.
Let me, uh, get comments from the board, Mike, since I heard you.
Yeah, I'm just confused by the previous comments, and I'm looking at the draft decision, and Paul, maybe I misunderstood your comments either, Paul, um, you know, obviously, we haven't seen a plan or discussed this in some months, but the proposed decision, just as it relates to the filing fee, references note thirteen for just all work done in accordance with the plan, so it doesn't specifically call out a, a list of work items and so forth, so I, I think that was your question, Paul, is there, are, are at least some improvements shown on that plan, I, I don't, I'm confused by kinda what we're discussing for these, you know, onsite improvements, and is there a, give me four of them, a short list.
What, what, I, I guess what I was, uh, saying was I thought that item thirteen would be compile, uh, would be the list of all the plans, even though some of those packages are narratives and not necessarily conventional, uh, plans, uh, the supplemental submission, for example, um, is in there.
Cause is it, oh, there, number C.
Yeah, so if.
Everything that's in the twenty-five pages is in the drafts, is my understanding.
So if we made, if we made item thirteen, that, uh, these items would be considered to be the plan, as the term is used in the decision, I think that would incorporate everything.
Uh, supplemental proposed signage changes.
Uh, it should be a comma, proposed.
Right.
Water drainage repairs, or and.
But, but all this is, uh, proposed signage changes, oh, okay, and proposed stormwater, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, I think what we, in my discussions and, and several visits to the property with the applicant, uh, there were, there was just enough discussion for me to understand that there were items that he was going to do for stormwater, I'm not speaking to signs or, or other, uh, planning board items, but to the stormwater in particular, there were, uh, approaches that the applicant was proposing, and that we, we could work, uh, more closely with them when the work was done, to make sure that it was adequate, sufficient, and appropriate in its application.
Is that sufficient for you, Mike?
It is, just make sure as it relates to fee discussion, we've got two thirteens in there, general order of conditions, and then project summary, so let's make sure we're referring to the right one.
Yeah, that's, I was looking at the other, the wrong thirteen there for a minute.
So you're talking about the one on page four?
Yeah, yeah.
That it's part of what was submitted. How about, um, we still have to come up with a number for the filing fee before we actually start, continue our, uh, public hearings, so.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, I think I previously at the initial start, posed any, uh, fee change, I think, given the, uh, further discussion of some, uh, site improvements, I'm willing to, uh, provide some fee waiver, but I'm still unclear on what number we're talking about.
Well, my proposal is thirty-one hundred. The applicant doesn't like it, but that's my proposal.
And that's in addition to the agreed upon conditions?
Yeah.
In improvements.
But, that's based on them doing this work and, and having conditions in there to ensure that they, they do do the work that resulted in the reduced fee.
You, you mentioned that some improvements have already been made?
Yes.
Would you be able to quantify how many actual dollars have been invested to date making those improvements?
Chris?
Oh, boy, I'd have to go back through and try to figure it out, I don't know, we weren't in bookkeeping mode when we did that, we just turned some of the crew loose and said, let's get this cleaned up and start investigating, and that was part of how we knew what all the conditions were, and some of it, the guys just cleaned it up because that's what we do.
Gotcha.
I've proposed thirty-one, do you wanna propose some other number, I mean, it's not based on what they've done.
I, I was hoping to get some clarity for my question, but that's, I have no more to clear now, so, pick a number.
Darren, comments on my number?
Um, I think thirty-one is reasonable, um, you know, this is a unique situation where it's a site plan review for an existing building, but, you know, it's been going on for a while, I know staff has been out there a bunch of times, so, it's a big project, I mean, there's a, it's a big building, it's a big property, it's obviously right up against Stony Brook, so there's a lot to it, so, I'd be, I think thirty-one is, sounds fair to me, and the improvements that, uh, the applicant has agreed to make, I think are, right, worthy of two-thirds of the, what would normally be the, the fee.
Do I hear a motion?
Uh, so it's a matter of.
A motion, is there a motion to reduce the filing fee from approximately ninety-nine thousand three hundred dollars to three thousand one hundred dollars?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mike, is, no discussion?
Anything, Mike?
Nope.
Okay.
Madam Chair, do we, do you just wanna tie that in some way to acknowledge the waiver of the fee is due to the applicant's, if he's still volunteering for that dollar amount, to make stormwater improvements according to the material submitted?
Yes.
Just wanna get it done tonight.
That's right. Okay, let's take a vote, all in favor of reducing the fee to thirty-one hundred dollars?
Did you ask the public?
Dylan?
Aye.
Kate, aye, Darren?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Aye, so it's reduced four to four zero, zero, thank you, you have a check?
Madam Chair, for the, for the record, did you open up the public for, for comments? I don't know, there's anybody here from the public for.
Oh, we're not at, at a point, we're just discussing the fee.
Sure.
When we get to that part, they will have a chance to talk. Thank you, do you, do you bring your checkbook?
I didn't know I was supposed to, to be honest, I guess I could go back and see if we had one at the site, but, um, the office is closed, if it's that critical, I'll.
Well.
Down in Panhandle at the.
Maybe by the end of the week?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
For sure.
I'm not gonna close a public hearing until we get it.
Um.
Paul, do you have a checkbook with you?
Yeah. Would you like me to do that?
If you want.
Yeah.
If that'll settle it.
If that, if that will get us out of here, why not?
Because I can't, I ca- technically, I can't close it until, I can't.
It's true.
Get that, uh.
All right. Correct.
With the children's All Saints Hospital.
Now, what's the second part of the speech?
Of what?
So, as far as the site plan itself.
So, since we have not met with you since April, and I know you have had a lot of discussions, I think we need a general review.
Update?
Update of, uh, what modifications you've made, um, I know Mike and Dylan had had, uh, comments on the as-built plans before, I don't know if there've been any modifications to address their issues, um, like, uh, things not being on the plan, uh, maybe septic, uh, whatever, and then just what you finalized for your plans for the drop-off, for signage, and protecting the kids and such, um.
It's all as noted on the proposal, all as discussed during the site visit.
But, but I, but.
You wanna refresh your memory?
I just wanna refresh my memory.
Yeah, refresh your memory.
Sorry, I was thinking you were anxious.
And I, and there was also ambiguity in the, uh, on the plans for the restaurant, how many s- seats were gonna be in the restaurant, so I would like a finalized number and know how that would affect the, uh, parking, along with existing, uh, businesses that are in there, plus what you've learned for months of operation, for what you need for the, um.
And in my spare time, I'll read the Iliad and the Odyssey.
Well, that's what you have those two here for.
That's a really long discussion, I, I'm a little unsure.
And I give you ten, I give you fifteen minutes.
All right, um. Okay, um, um, what's the best way to do this? This is the plan that you received back in July, which shows the signage improvements, um, it says everything that was discussed, um, I could read down through the list, that basically addresses the drop-off area, it addresses the traffic diversion over here, um, and it talks about each of the, don't park here areas that members were concerned about, um, I don't wanna go into all the details unless there's a specific question, because none of it was controversial, it was all discussed and approved at that time, so we put it on a plan to make it part of the record.
Now, are those signs in place now, or are those?
Some of them are in place now, some of them were waiting for the final vote, you're not gonna delay any until this is finished, um, but there's nothing of controversy that I'm aware of, including, um, there's language in here to submit a final sign plan for the site separately, and that will have its own requirements.
So you have, like, seven, excuse me, seven areas, and.
Yes.
Cause I was never clear before, so you're, you were saying before you weren't gonna put up signs, you were just gonna do lane markings, or, or what?
Well, we're gonna do a combination of the two, and, well, um, it's pretty well, the, the, the issue having to do with the drop-off is right in this area, um, and that is pretty well, partly it just took a year or so of people getting used to the place, we had a tournament this weekend, and it all went very smoothly, and there were really no issues, and I think as time goes on, that will continue, um, we sort of figured that in the first place, but, you know, until it actually happens, so that's going well, and we continue to monitor the situation, and we will, part of it is because there were so many issues along the, the edge of the parking lot, where it, that's the river, um, the drainage just really didn't work very well, and that affected the parking, it affected the traffic flow, and that was one of the areas we did, was we did a lot of cleanup in certain areas along here, and Paul and I have walked that, I don't, it's eleven hundred feet long, it would take me all night to just give you the summary of it, um, the basic thrust of this whole thing is it's one of the best examples of sheet drainage that I've ever seen, it's nearly dead flat, and one of the problems was created by the lack of maintenance that Curry was going through when it was in its nosedive operation, they just stopped doing all maintenance, so you got every bit of oddball stuff accumulating in the flat edge of the parking lot where it transitioned into the wetland, and we went and cleaned a lot of that up, which you have to do on a regular basis, or sheet runoff does not work, if you do clean those out, it works great, and there've been no ponding, no puddling, and it is collecting any material from the parking lot, and if you take a walk out here, you'll see if there's been an event, you'll see soda cans and orange cones along the edge of the parking lot, that's where they're supposed to be, and not in the wetland, and not in the river, so it's really functioning quite well, um, I'm really pleased with that, so what we're gonna do is just continue to work on that, continue to enhance it, you know, every step along the way, there are slightly different variations, and as the engineer said, there's just no way in hell they could ever put this on engineering drawings, cause that's designed for huge improvements, like a full road cut or a full structural drainage system, this is really just very careful of working away on the edge to work out the relationship between natural wetlands and the paved environment without expanding it, um, let me, um, use the other point for a second, um, in this particular case, as, again, this just reiterates everything that's in your proposal, that goes back to June and July, each of the types of conditions is detailed as you walk on, there are a couple of spots where there's a steep slope that eroded, that will be one type of trouble, there's some spots where vegetation hasn't been pruned, there's some spots where a lot of trash and debris is still accumulated, there's six-foot, like a chain link fence, and it, the odds and ends are details that you would never wanna detail on an engineering drawing, but we have detailed it by section and using photographs, so for instance, Paul and I can go down there and pretty much agree on, all right, well, here's this, let's do that, and, um, I think that's about the best that can be done over there, and it's just something that we're gonna do ourselves, I don't know that we'll try to sub it out, and if it's ours, it's our people, we all know what we're doing, and it'll take some time, because you have to sort of work it gently, um, but I think this really spells out everything that we've talked about, without going into every detail, and when Paul and I walked it, there were really no issues of controversy, we pretty much agree on everything, it's a wetland, it's a river, don't screw it up, you know, don't mean to be silly, but it kinda comes down to that, at that point, um, in terms of operations, maybe Sandra should give you a summary of that, um, and then whenever's left, I'll answer questions.
I think, uh, one of the.
For the record?
Who you are.
Who you are for the record, yeah.
I'm Sandra Hobby, the, uh, Director of Operations of the Millworks, uh, so I think one of the things I recall that we talked a lot about was that front entrance, the drop-off area, and as Chris said, we have seen a, a great improvement in, um, people's use of that, um, that area, and they really have a nice flow, um, coming, coming up, dropping off, and driving right out, which does not mean that the, we don't occasionally have people who park where they're not supposed to park, we do, um, but for the most part, it's, it's really been, been just excellent, because the people just, um, we encourage them to come right in, drop off, and then go, so that the kids aren't coming through the parking lot, um, most recently, we've been working on the lighting outside, I don't know if you saw the, the, the front entrance with the steps and going into the main, okay, so, uh, we've worked a lot on the inside as far as our, um, uh, front desk, people really understand how that is the way to come in, um, and it's great for me, I see people, I used to see them trying to come in through the side doors and the side parking lot, they don't do it anymore, and we now actually have signs up that say employees only, and, um, and once you've been in the facility, you realize you really do wanna use the main entrance, the one that's, and we've added a lot of signage to drive people to that main entrance, um, it really is the fastest way to get wherever the people wanna go, and when they come in that side door, it's, it's not advantageous, and once they've figured that out, they stop using that, um, so, the, um, I'm, I'm always out there observing, watching what's happening during events, during afternoons, you'll see, you know, around four o'clock or so, it starts to pick up with after-school, you know, basketball practices, right now it's basketball, um, and, and a lot of that traffic is the drop-off and drive right through, um, I see the adults coming in early in the morning, five-thirty, six-thirty, seven-thirty, some of them parkway out, cause they want more exercise, you know, and then, and come on in, but, um, there's just, I, I have not seen a lot of issues as far as that goes, we have used the front, the lawn area, we had an event there, it was, uh, uh, Westford Against Substance Abuse and, um, suicide. We have used the front, the lawn area, we had an event there, it was, uh, uh, Westford Against Substance Abuse and, um, Suicide Prevention. You know, we did some fundraising, um, or opened it up for fundraising for those organizations, and, uh, the Westford, um, uh, Foundation. But anyway, um, it was great. We were able to put them on the lawn, because it was a nice day, and that's where they wanted to be, and they had some outdoor games. And the way the lawn is now, if you're facing the front entrance, um, you, you can access it right off of that platform, which, you know, maybe someday will be the outdoor seating for the restaurant. But, um, for right now, it's just a great little, it, they could walk right over there, and, and they were there, everyone was safe, and it was set off back enough that, um, the people had a good time. So, that was good, because I got to see how that worked. That's always my concern, you know? Is it, is it really going to work? Are we, i- is it going to be a safety issue or not? Um, trying to think what else, uh, has happened. Do you have any questions about anything that you...
I guess, well, since you guys have been operating for about a year, has the number of parking spaces been an issue? I mean, have you found that all the spots are full at any points, or during tournaments or anything, or has it been sufficient?
Yeah, no, it's absolutely been sufficient, and, um, and if I ever, and we haven't even, that parking lot that I was telling you that we use for employees, that's wide open all the time. I've never seen, you know, people don't even try to sneak in there, and there's plenty of, I mean, th- that's plenty of parking in there, if they wanted to use that. But they don't even need to, because there's been so much parking. Um, as it's, as the area has been cleaned up and opened up, and, you know, the lines, painting the lines made a huge difference. And so, no, we haven't had any issues.
So, don't park in the back of Building Twelve either?
But, yeah, right, so...
You'd also asked about the restaurant. Now, the restaurant has to go through a couple of steps, and w- one of them, of course, is a public hearing with the Board of Selectmen for a, uh, for a license. But the plan we submitted, uh, shows a maximum number of seats, and we don't think we're going to meet that number. We have a hundred and seventy-three is the maximum number of seats that would be in the restaurant. There's also a snack bar that we project, uh, fifty-six, uh, seats, so it's...
You have this planned back in February?
So, it's relatively small, but it's still going to take the, uh, the licensing approval and all that sort of jazz.
I just wanted to confirm, because there was confusion, at least for me, whether the restaurant was going to be a hundred and seventy seats or two-hundred-and-twenty seats, so... Plus, plus the snack bar, so that's why I asked for clarification.
There is, the plan you have shows, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-one, uh, in the restaurant and fifty-six in the snack bar, but it's not going to be that big.
Yeah, so I, I would like the plan, anything that's part of the official package to have the correct number?
We don't have a correct number, because we haven't designed the restaurant.
Well, but you're stating it's going to be a hundred and seventy maximum.
And we said the plan that we gave you shows a maximum of. That's, really shows you, it's the biggest it'll, it'll ever be.
But if you have two-hundred-and-thirty for the restaurant, plus fifty for the snack bar, which is two-hundred-and-seventy, and it's one parking space for every three...
Seats.
Seats, that means you have to have ninety parking spaces just for the restaurant.
But what was interesting about this, and part of the whole argument, is many of the customers are going to be there anyway.
Maybe.
So, it'll be double-dipping in terms of parking requirements if we did that. I think the same parking standard, the parking standard we have established in the draft decision is for a comprehensive use of the project, and that is, the client has to control the parking on-site. If there's a problem with parking, we're, we're going to get summoned back before the board. So, if you want to put up a maximum number of, of, uh, seats in the restaurant, that's fine. But we're, we're not looking at the restaurant as a standalone impact upon parking.
All right, I just want to have a plan that represents...
Yeah.
What you're actually proposing, and not just a number that, oh gee, that's, that's not the right number.
The, uh, parking plan is dated February eighth, two thousand seventeen. The, excuse me, the, the restaurant plan is dated February eighth, two thousand seventeen.
And that's for the two-hundred-and-thirty plus fifty?
That's two-hundred...
Which includes outdoor seating that doesn't exist.
Well, I don't care. All I care is the numbers.
Well, if it's a number that doesn't exist, I would recommend use the one-seventy number, not the two-thirty.
Well, then I want the plans to represent one-seventy.
Right. It does, it does.
No, it's, he said it's two-thirty.
No, no, this plan tables all the different totals, and you can add them up any which way you like. I would argue that it's a, it's a very small number, because everybody's already in the facility for another purpose. This is not a standalone restaurant, and we don't expect...
So, you are saying for the record that your proposed maximum for both the restaurant and the other one is two-hundred-and-thirty?
Yes.
It's been so long since I've seen the plans, I was kind of hoping to have them in the packet again, but I, I just want to make sure that what we have on record reflects what they are claiming.
Is that... Question. Chris, is that, is that, uh, plan you just held up, is that part of the site plan? No, it's the plan we gave you back in February when this question came up, and you wanted to discuss the restaurant. Can we reference that in the site plan?
Sure, go right ahead.
No, you referenced it in your, well...
Already was, just because you've already received it.
Can I, go ahead.
Can you remind me again what the total number of parking spaces there are in the lot? I don't recall.
Yeah, I don't, um...
Four hundred and something?
Right.
Josh, for the record, I guess.
I have to...
My feeling is that, I mean, at a hundred and seventy-three seats, what, you need fifty, fifty-six? Parking spots for a hundred and seventy-three, one every three, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so fifty-six or fifty-seven spots? I mean, I think the snack bar, you can definitely make the case that the people who are going to be using a snack bar are going to be there for some other reason, right?
Exactly.
Seems to me like they probably have parking if it's a hundred and seventy-three.
Yep, I think I agree.
Okay, I just want it somewhere noted official. That it's a hundred and seventy plus fifty. Uh, I had a comment on the plans themselves, because you took, you've just provided us plans that were given to you when you bought the place. And my concern is that we just have a plan that shows the humongous building, a, a humongous footprint that encompasses multiple buildings, and there's, aren't any lines on this plan that delineate that we are only talking about two, two sections of that huge building. Because I don't want somebody to come back down the road and say, well, you, planning board, you approved it for that whole space, and we're not approving it for the whole space, we're only approving it for what you were calling buildings, what, seventeen and eighteen?
I think it's written in the approval that it's seventeen and eighteen.
But they aren't on the plans. There's nothing on the plans that shows where buildings seventeen and eighteen are, so that needs to be on the plans. We've been asking for that, I think.
I, I, I don't think you've asked for it before, but we can provide it.
I've been thinking it. We haven't met with you for me to formalize it.
I turned off my radio telemetry helmet, I'm sorry.
Uh...
Put it on.
Uh, one question I guess I have too, is when we were out there a while back, on the western part of the, the far western left part of that plan, there are a number of spaces there that were covered up with dirt and stuff. Is it, has that been removed, or is that still in process?
The dirt pile is gone, and we're about to start laying out the parking for Phase Two, at which point, there's still an awful lot of coming and going, and the concrete is stored there, and all the tractor trailer, it's a, it's a pretty busy place. Once construction starts to wrap up next door, we'll be out there doing all the layouts.
Mike, do you have any comments?
Um, yeah, a couple real quick, thanks. So, um, and Sandra, I think, was commenting on that main entrance, and that U drop-off at the main entrance, which, um, you know, I think I've, there are some similar issues there, where, you know, cars are parking in what really isn't closest to the building, which really, which is supposed to be the U-turn around. Um, I don't have the plan, is that, is part of that plan to have that striped as no parking? Because you've seen it, Sandra, cars had to back out and they get stacked up, because somebody's parked right near the main building on a rainy day. So, is there additional striping, no parking for close to the building?
All we, Mike, all we did is stripe out where the parking is. We didn't, um, stripe no parking, because then the whole property would be just painted everywhere. We'll, um, I'm not sure exactly what, what, because we have to make some changes there anyway, because the handicap parking changed a bit.
Right.
What do you want to do?
Talking about right in front of the main entrance?
I can tell you what, I can tell you. I haven't talked to Chris yet, but I can tell you my plan.
Because I've observed it personally, it's just, that needs to be striped somehow for, for, no, I'm not talking the whole site, Chris, I'm just saying that here, because that seems to be a...
We certainly want to control it. We certainly want to solve that problem. It is sporadic, there's, you can go for days and weeks and nothing goes wrong, and then there'll be one day when people will do it. I don't know why, but that's part of staffing and part of management. That can happen anywhere on any project. So, I think, um, it's just general public safety, but yes, we will attend to that. Otherwise, people can't use the facility, you know, it's just sort of, I don't want to say common sense, but, um...
Again, as Kate said, we need it to be reflected on the plan, and a, and a plan to do it, whether it's conditioned or not. So, I had a couple other quick questions.
Go ahead.
For staff. So, Jeff, I just want to make sure, I gave you a chance to look back through the April whatever second packet, and there's, there's a couple of things of... You know, this is a, this is a longer list of uses than is under the ZPA. Um, and maybe it's just more detail on types of recreation, but it would actually be good to have kind of this list shown with allowed uses, and then what's under the ZPA? Because it doesn't, I'm trying to match it up to what's in the April second record from the ZPA variance, and I can't follow it.
So, one of the things that we can do, and I had, uh, actually our town planer raised a similar concern. He was also trying to match up, um, the uses in the draft decision, as was, uh, some of the comments raised by the applicant's attorney, um, with the zoning board decision versus what was permitted, so we could certainly, um, take a hard look at that and work with the applicant, make sure we're all on the same page before a decision gets finalized.
Yep, and then two other ones. In the April second packet, I think, is represented or proposed by the applicant on certain conditions. There was a, a three-month timeframe to propose signage, and then a six-month, uh, installation after approval. This talks about a March nineteenth installation, but, but in the suggested conditions in April offered by the applicant, it was kind of a three-months of proposal. Um, so I'm confused kind of what the timeline is for, uh, these proposed conditions, it says six months after some approval on or before March of two thousand nineteen. Am I reading that correctly?
Can, can I answer that?
Sure.
The, we have to submit an application by March eighteenth for a comprehensive sign permit application to this board. That, uh, and then we have to complete the work within six months after the permit is ultimately approved and the appeal period is up. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. It was different than your April representation, so...
We have conceded.
Why do you feel that you may need more time for both drafting and then executing?
Well, I don't think we ever discussed a time limit on the installation of the signs once the approval was granted. That fell out of the sky, as far as I'm concerned. I don't have a problem, but it confuses me when we have a condition issued on a permit that hasn't been issued. Um, so I'm, you know, you can put anything in there, but the final sign, um, application and, and permit approval, I would assume would dictate the details of that. I don't know, I, I'm not an attorney, but I would assume it might even supersede this. But I thought it was just an agreement amongst us that this is the timeframe to get the signs done, four months to apply, and then six months to build it. And we don't know how long the board will take to review it.
So, our position was, we just wanted to have a date certain by which they had to start that process and make an application to the board? The board has a, a different preference, or...
Because there's two types of signage. There's a directional signage, which should be part of this application, and then you are going to come back with actual signage to go on the buildings.
Those things which would require a sign permit, building signs or monument signs require the permit. We will, we will submit that application. It gets approved tonight. We'll submit the application by March eighteen. And then we'll install them quick like a bunny. We don't need six months in order to get them done. But if there's, you know, if there's snow and ice during the time where we need to put it in, we need more time than that. I think that six months was in there just to be practical. It can be less than six months. But as Chris said, that permit hasn't been issued yet.
Well, understood, and there really shouldn't be anything necessarily in here, but, Mike, is your concern the directional signage?
No, it's just, you know, based on this decision, we're a year away from signage if I take the, the, you know, and, and we've talked about that being a key provision of this, of where we're at, so... Uh, it's okay, I don't, you know, three months, March, end of March is now, five months, I guess, so, um... I, I would suggest, since the applicant represented it in April, that we go back to the three-month, um, provision. Still giving you time for installation if something gets screwed up on assembly and installation, but I see no reason outside of three months why we can't get a plan from you, so...
For signage, for...
No, you're going to, you're going to have the application in by March, right? It's not a plan. You're going to have the application in, actually, you're going to have the application in for, in February. In order to meet your March eighteenth meeting date, we have to have our, um, our materials in by February twenty-four.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty.
That's fair.
All right.
The last item, the last item, again, referring to April packet there, the applicant represented O and M and maintenance plans for, uh, Avid Mill as being representative for use here, uh, but I don't see them referenced in the doc sets. I think they were supplemental materials, and are we still using those or referencing them here?
We didn't hang up on you, we're just thinking.
There's a long-term pollution prevention and an O and M plan, and they were submitted in April as representative of what would be used here, so to speak.
So, do you want a potential decision to refer to those documents, which might then get updated upon whatever stormwater measures are actually...
Yeah, because right now, we don't have a, we have a repair plan, and it's going to show on a plan. I don't, I don't see any listing here under thirteen on page whatever, that talks about any O and M and reference. And I think the applicant said, referred this plan, and gave us, you know, twenty pages of materials, so...
I just want to be cognizant of the fact that we don't have a stormwater management permit in front of us here. And this is something that the applicant's volunteering to do.
It's Chris and the applicant, you provided these materials, so what, what are we doing with them, Paul?
Chris? Do, do you want to update or provide a similar O and M plan once the work is done to document what work would be on, maintenance would be ongoing?
Okay.
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 All right, Mike, are you satisfied with the as-bilts and the proposal plans as submitted in April? Because that's what we have now. Nothing's been revised, as far as I can tell, other than, uh, one for signage, for directional signage.
The, the stormwater plan and the, and the signage plan were both updated during the middle of the summer. The, uh, we've got the, we've got the dates in the draft decision of the revision date through, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Did we actually get these in?
Revised through, um, they were submitted.
You got them so long ago, they're old news. Everybody's forgotten about it.
Seven thirteen, submitted.
Did we get them?
Revised in three minutes.
Yeah, you have them, yep.
Now that we have electronic copies, I can't keep track of what we've received.
Well, we just need to save your packets on your front books, so that you have them for easier reference. Am I hearing concerns from the board that you don't feel as though you've seen or remember the information, or... I'm just trying to get a handle if you feel as though you have enough to close? Do you need to see the final attachments to go with the decision?
I would suggest we have enough to close. I don't think we have new information. I think that probably, uh, respectfully, that we take another look through the conditions based on what we just talked about, and clean that up.
Yeah, I have some questions about the draft.
Okay.
Anyway. Uh, does anybody in the audience have any comments on the plans? If there aren't any, I would like to just review the, uh, draft decision for questions that we have about it. See nobody jumping up? Mike, do you... Mike, do you, what comments do you have about the draft decision?
I think I raised most of them, Kate. But others, I'll come back and thank you too.
Okay.
Nope, I think clarification and the questions I had were discussed tonight.
In the same boat.
I had a question on page three, item five, this is project summary. It says several of the uses listed in the project summary require other relief. What's the relief?
This, I don't want to speak for you, this is the town planner's comment when he was, I believe, comparing what was thrown in this application request versus what's permitted by right in that zoning district versus relief granted by the zoning board. So it's just, I think, a placeholder to reconcile and make sure that this board isn't approving something that isn't covered by either the zoning board's decision or what's allowed by right.
So this goes into Mike's request that you...
Yes.
Review, okay.
Right, Josh, that was your...
Yes.
Okay.
And then more findings? Do you have a question if we have more findings?
That was more as a reminder to me that that isn't complete at this point.
Okay, so, okay, so you're going to give us a revised draft with the other stuff?
Yes. Yes.
On the site plan review criteria, is everybody comfortable with number two on the top of page five? Where it states we find that the approved use to be less intensive than the previous active use? And that a more detailed evaluation of pedestrian vehicular safety could be deferred until such time as the applicant proposes other changes in use? Is that to state that whatever was approved by the ZBA were okay, but if they add more uses, we need to look at safety again?
That was something that was added by, by the applicant's counsel, I believe. That was also added to criteria numbers eight and nine and ten. And that was not on all of the drafts. And so I, I highlighted that because I was not entirely clear whether or not that should stay. If that came from the board, if it came from the applicant. And so I wanted to bring that up.
Personally, like for number nine, I would prefer that it's not in there. I, I would think that traffic is probably going to be about the same, given all these uses, like the restaurant and such, especially when the restaurants open. I don't know.
Keep in mind, the prior use was three shifts a day, twenty-four hours a day, where pretty much just, I guess you could say two shifts.
By day, by day, um, to eleven PM or whatever.
Yeah, but we don't have eight hundred or a thousand people working there, it's a lot less.
Yeah, but you have a restaurant. It's, it's, it's the, not the total, it's how many are there at once?
Sandra works three shifts, doesn't she?
So we have, okay, you're going to submit a comprehensive sign special per, special permit, sign installation, blah, blah, blah. We lost them.
He said nine o'clock.
Okay.
Did it die?
Federico.
Okay.
Ten percent left.
Let's see, do you want to...
So we need...
Wire?
Well, it sounds as though the draft needs to be, have revisions anyway, before we actually vote on the draft decision.
You want to fire wire to...
Ten percent.
Mm-hmm.
The question is, is there more material, or can we close the public, did we get your check?
You, you got my check from my personal checking account.
Can we cash it tomorrow morning?
I can't have lunch tomorrow, so...
You must walk it out tomorrow morning, tell them.
But I think that the instruction you've given to the staff regarding the revisions...
Yes.
Are, are clear enough, I would like to think that we, we can vote so that Mr. Yule doesn't have to pay me to come back here again for another, another meeting, as much as I enjoy this.
We love you too, but... Mike?
Yeah.
I think we have enough to close, Paul, the primary concern is it lists uses and so forth and, and other materials as part of the submission that weren't clear whether to be included or not, so.
And, and...
I'd rather we simply, I'd rather we simply, it's nothing, this, what you're asking for is different than a said decision to be reduced to writing, I think so. I would rather we clean it up a little bit and all know what we're voting on, so.
And have plans that reflect the requested clarification?
I'm just saying it's not uncommon for decisions to say the applicant shall update the plan to show X, Y, Z.
Yep.
And in terms of the language regarding those usage which were permitted by the variance and which are permitted by the zoning bylaw, that language is already in here, you're just asking staff to move it around.
We need to finish this tonight.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate, aye. Darren?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Are we comfortable with voting, given what is there tonight, or do you want to delay the vote until the next meeting?
I'm comfortable as long as the, you know, with the discussion comments to be made or updated from comments tonight, as long as the applicant is.
Yes.
So we have that you will update the plans to show the exact footprints for buildings seventeen and eighteen.
Show something as regard to that, no parking area on the plan?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Be very clear at one hundred and seventy-three seats for the restaurant?
Yep. Anything else, Mike, that they need to update?
Clear up the references to the O and M plan and what document we're including in the decision.
Did someone say the O and M plan would be submitted when the work is complete, that's what I thought I heard.
Yeah, yeah, yes, but just making, you want a reference to what, that will be submitted.
Yeah, yeah.
Clean it up.
Okay.
And our longstanding request for it to be stamped by an engineer.
Yep.
No, it's not going to get stamped by an engineer.
I thought that's, I thought you've said, represented that all along, that that was...
No, to the contrary, the engineer said it's really nothing for him to do. The O and M plan is, the O and M plan, they don't stamp those.
No, but other plans, the site plan.
It already is stamped, but it's not an engineering design, that's the whole point. We've been through that one and we closed that issue up, I thought.
Because our, we have to have a stamped one, right, for our regulations?
We're in that gray area now, right? So this is a bit unusual, because right now it's change of use for inside.
Yeah.
And the question is for the external improvements. I mean, there are certain things that typically you would want to have benefit of at least a professional opinion as to, say, locations and methods of any pedestrian safety features. That doesn't necessarily mean that you need, have a full plan with stamp. It's just, what does this board need and what do you feel comfortable relying on for information to make a, a decision?
Well, I think we've been out there, I mean, I, I think the plan we see here sums up kind of the site out there, as far as I can tell, from a, from a high level anyway.
I, yeah, so can we give them a certain amount of time then to update the drawings that they are providing? With the information on them?
You could.
Not necessarily official plans, are we, if we're comfortable with just non-engineering stamps?
Hey, hey folks, can I make a suggestion?
Yep.
You know, this hasn't been before since April, and we're still discussing whether we have the right plan, a stamped plan and so forth. Could we suggest taking two weeks to clean up the documentation so we know what we're voting on?
And then vote next time, I...
It's a simple question, I... It's been five months.
I know, I know. It should be quick. We've closed the public hearing, there's no more input.
You want to discuss this all you want, it's fine, we've been here seven times.
Yeah, well...
I don't want to come back and, and my dear friend Paul is not into charitable donations. We've already spent more just on sitting here than on the filing piece.
You've been here four, you've been here four times, this is the fifth.
Well, whatever, I just want, all I was hoping you would say is add the following information to the plans in the same manner that we've done everything else, and not have to go back to who's stamping what. The information we've submitted has been acceptable up to now. I'm not sure why we're adding this all over again. It's been resolved and it's been discussed, and I'll update the plan, we'll put the notes on there that you've requested, and we'll get it done, and then you can vote it, and this is an unusual project. We can't drag an engineer into it or it'll just never stop. They have special requirements that they have to adhere to, and this project doesn't meet them.
And Jeff and Paul, I mean, is it, I thought you had represented in the previous comment tonight that you were going to do that. That's what I heard, that's what I thought I heard you say, is that you were going to get them stamped as we had requested when you were making your presentation.
I'm, I'm sorry, then, that's a misunderstanding on my part.
It's the only reason I made my comment, is I thought you had said it, but...
I wouldn't want to mislead anybody.
Go ahead.
You know, that, that gives the applicant, the applicant's attorney, a chance to review the final documents so that it is unequivocally clear, you know, of what's in the decision, so, okay?
Yep, I agree, because I was hoping to get a refresher, since it has been since April that we did meet with you. And I know you've had discussions with others that we weren't privy to, but... So, let's let staff work with you. Any modifications that we have, you need to update your findings and such, you're going to modify whatever you want to call these things, that your plans, drawings, whatever you want to call them, and then we can vote on it next time. And maybe for staff, if we can, if you can provide us with all the appropriate document or plans and such that are in here as a refresher so that we can remind ourselves on what the finalized versions are of everything that we're including in here.
Is the applicant able to provide your final materials at least a week in advance of the next meeting?
October twenty-second.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a motion, well...
Yes, there are motions.
I would make a motion to continue the public hearing.
The hearing's closed.
It's closed.
Just to continue the discussion.
Continue the discussion to the next meeting, October twenty-second.
I don't think we, I don't think we need to, we closed it, we just postponed this, we're not volunteering that, am I, Jeff?
That's correct.
Right.
We're hoping to get it on our next, which is October twenty-second. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, do you need to...
Thanks all for your accommodations, sorry for the distance again.
Nice, Mike.
On curiosity, were there any of the general business items that you wanted to be able to chime in on?
Would you be helping, no, no, would you be helping continue, I'm okay, thanks.
Okay, because, yeah, like the, I imagine the input to the ZBA, we might continue or something. Okay, thanks for calling in, appreciate it.
All right, thanks, bye.
Bye. Our next item is a site plan review for a cell tower at Eleven Brook Side Road. The applicant has, since we now only have three members of the board who can vote on it, the applicant has requested that we withdraw the application, or that they withdraw without prejudice. So we just need to vote on the request.
The request for withdrawal without prejudice.
And we can all vote on that?
You may.
Okay, is there, I'll wait for Darren to come back then.
That would be ideal.
Since you have to recuse yourself.
I do apologize, I do have to leave momentarily.
Do I have to abstain from this vote?
You don't have to.
Okay.
But if we have an extra member here...
It helps.
It's just accepting withdrawal request, so.
How can I do one of those recusal things, how do I get, can I get one of those?
You're recused by not showing up.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Or leaving.
Or by telling Jeremy to come.
Yeah, right.
Yes, Jeremy...
It's not hockey season yet.
It, it's, but it is coming up, I will, and I won't send, I don't send him for games, but I do, I will have some personal conflicts throughout the year, and Jeremy more than welcomes the opportunity to come in.
He loves it, he wishes he had more opportunities.
Yes, he's, not a day goes by where he asks me, oh, can I please, please, please go to the planning board meeting?
I know, Mr. Titus is here for, what item are you here for?
Yeah, my name's Craig, and this is...
I just want to know, so I know if you need to be out of order, then, uh...
A and R.
A and R.
Yeah, it's an A and R.
Oh, okay.
Uh, at ninety-two Nutting Road.
Okay. So you're number B, okay. So we're waiting for you so that we can vote, we have, is there a motion to accept the request to withdraw without prejudice?
So moved.
Due to lack of quorum.
Due to lack of quorum.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, since Mike's not on, we can just vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?
I guess aye.
It's up to you.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Are you voting?
I guess aye.
Okay, so we have four zero zero.
Haven't voted on this before.
Palmer's first, sorry. Although...
Mr. Palmer might let them go out of order if it's free.
Mr. Palmer, do you mind, I think theirs is going to take less time than your request. You've been here so long already, okay.
Roddy pays himself by the hour.
We are, general business item B, which is an A and R, request for endorsement of a, A and R, something or approval not required plan for ninety-two Nutting Road. There you go, ma, name and address, please.
Craig Grim, I live at ninety-eight Nutting Road with my wife Sheila here.
Okay.
It was my dad's property, bought in nineteen fifty-six, and my wife and I have an N piece that's not in these plans, twenty-two years ago. But now, the, my dad passed away three and a half years ago, and can't afford the taxes on the place. And we want to put, conservatively, two house lots in there, and leave the existing home, my parents' home, that's a hundred years old. All engineering, it's been done, the deep holes, there's two hundred and ten feet of frontage. You should have copies of these plans.
Yeah.
Yep.
It was done through Ross Associates in Harvard, Mass. Neil Dorman was the engineer, and Ray Dick from the health department did the last deep hole right on, on top of my dad's well. So we're losing the well there, but we needed a septic site for the existing, existing pit. But now there's Tom Water going up the street, so.
Madam Chair, if I may, this application was reviewed by our staff in consultation with the building commissioner. We didn't determine there to be any zoning issues, and it appears to meet the statutory criteria for endorsement.
Great, any questions, comments, do you have any?
No, that was, uh...
Perfect, any from the board?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the A and R plan with no...
Determination as to compliance with zoning.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, there you go.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Your turn, Roddy. Is it Roddy, yeah? I got the right one. Jenny Rhodes. This is a discussion over request. This is a discussion over your quest from you concerning Jenny Richards Road.
That's correct, uh, my name is Roddy Palmer for Tidin Corporation, and I guess Paul and I had had a rather long-term discussion on how best to bring Jenny Richards Road for acceptance before town meeting, you know, recently with Jeff as well. There's a number of items that had been left standing in terms of work to be done, that being one inch top course, granite curbing, and a sidewalk on one side. The, well, one, one of the problems that has, um, kept further progress from being made is primarily the, um, the binder courses deteriorated radically for a number of reasons. And so we are proposing rather, none of us saw the wisdom of putting the new top course in the curbing and, uh, on top of a deteriorated base course. So what we had proposed and thought was the best solution was, rather than do the work that, that was left to be done, that we substitute a new binder course in, rather than install the granite curbing and the sidewalk. We felt that was the best way to move forward with getting it ready for, um, acceptance. So for that reason, we had this discussion to request a waiver of the granite curbing and sidewalk, and fully replace the binder course.
Okay.
And so, Madam Chair, uh, the, Roddy is correct to say that we've been, uh, working on getting this road accepted at the behest of the many residents who are out there. For a couple of years now, and of course, as Roddy described, for reasons not entirely under his control, the base course is insufficient. It would just be a waste, but from a business perspective, it doesn't make, it doesn't make any business sense for Roddy to do all of that work that was originally approved, but instead, those items that the residents didn't want, the sidewalk and the vertical, the, the slope granite curb, financially, that made sense for Tidin to put in, reinvest in the base course, reclaim it, cover up all those trenches where water and gas were subsequent, subsequently installed, and then end up with a, a road that has a, a, um, a monolithic asphalt berm like we've been installing in other places in town.
Cape Cod burn?
Yes, ti- style, but it's monolithic, which is, the problem we've had with, with asphalt berms is if they're installed on top of the base course, the first snowplow that even just gets near it, the berm can smell it coming down the street, and it just crumbles, it falls up big. Our highway superintendent likes to call them berm loaves, like, they look like that big loaf of bread you see in the side of parking lots, 'cause they're installed on top, monolithic is actually placed at the same time that the top course is placed, so it's one part of it, and it, it will bounce much, it'll handle the snowplows a lot better, and it's on the inside radius as well, which is important to note. So this was a solution that, as you can see in your packets, was supported unanimously by the current residents that are out there, it gives Roddy the opportunity to go out and, and get the work done theoretically even before our November fifteenth deadline, if contractors weathers and everything else can line up for acceptance at a subsequent annual town meeting. He'll have to put in the base, we'd like to watch that go through the winter, see if there are any defects in the sub soils, if not, come back in the spring and put the top course down. So that was the current plan, it's, it resolves the problem of this road just having lingered for these many years while we try to figure out the best solution, so.
And the monolithic berm will suffice for, um, stormwater?
Right, that's, we just installed it on Main Street as a part of our town project and, and elsewhere in town, and we, we find them to be sufficient.
Okay.
For stormwater purposes especially.
So just typically, 'cause I have to, have to bolt, so I think the discussion item tonight, I think Mr. Palmer is trying to handle and see if this board is at least amenable and open-minded to this solution, to move things forward, 'cause typically what would be required is, if you're trying to do something different than what got originally approved, you would look for modifications of the original approval, and I think before any paperwork or anything is filed, he's trying to get a, I'm trying to put words in your mouth, but get a sense of, is this something that the board might be open to considering, given that all of the residents are in favor of this approach.
Have you met any resistance elsewhere besides the residents, or any, has anybody said much about it?
Most of the discussions I've had have been with Paul.
Yeah, I did, I, I do know that the highway superintendent, uh, uh, he, I, I spoke with him earlier today, in fact, on this issue, and, you know, was not, didn't have at, at his fingertips the exact information as to whether or not there was, you know, what there was, what was supposed to be out there originally, I can follow up with him, he, I, I would anticipate, I, I don't know what his, what his thoughts would be.
But you haven't heard, you haven't heard anything negative, okay?
Well, yeah, I, I can't speak for the highway superintendent, but, you know, it's.
We could certainly ask for his, if the board wants benefit of his opinion, we can certainly get it.
So this is really to get a sense of the board tonight?
Yeah, this is just non-binding discussion.
Right, you have the jurisdiction to grant the waivers, but that's what would need to happen in order for if, if I, following, based on my conversations with, with Roddy and the decision makers at Tidin, that, you know, they need some kind of understanding that they go ahead and do all this work, that you are, important to the conversation is that we are holding a bond or a sum surety, uh, uh, you know, that doesn't cover the amount that we, we would need to go out and put the sidewalk in, to put in slope granite curb, to put in, you know, the base course and the top course, wouldn't even come close to do that, but I think what we do have, I, we anticipate they would wanna get back if they were to go out and spend all this money putting in the, the road, the asphalt, the, 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 uh, monolithic berm and the top course.
Okay, and the residents also mentioned foregoing streetlights too, just.
That might have been on the plans, it, it, it wasn't uncommon
Okay.
in that era, to have a streetlight, lights, but I, none of the residents.
Fourteen houses.
Right.
Right, I don't, I don't see a problem with.
No.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I, I think a general comment, it would be nice if we, um, I think this is the second or third thing of this nature that's come back years or decades after the fact, with there being a request to do something that's less than what the plans originally called for, I think it would be great if, if we had a check and balance with this board where we weren't letting things get this far removed.
Right.
I mean, it's obviously not, not great for residents.
Yeah, we've certainly stopped, if I may, Madam Chair, we've stopped this from happening going forward
Yeah.
uh, with, with amendments to our regulations over time, and paying attention to, you know, how far and how long projects go out there without amending
Yeah.
the, the surety, uh, so the, the, we've, we are capturing that, we have taken, during my tenure, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen roads off the unacceptable list, and we're not looking to add any.
Yeah, yeah, so I think this sounds, uh,
Yeah.
sounds good for the residents.
Matt Lewin will be happy if you take another one off the list.
And the town is currently plowing this and everything, I mean, you know, the town is currently, is the town currently plowing this?
Pardon?
No.
In, in this case, it does, uh, at the time this subdivision was approved, it was the policy of the town to plow subdivisions roads uh, from the time, uh, the binder went in. Subsequently, they changed that, so if it was done today, it would be the responsibility of, of the applicant to plow it, but Jenny Richards Road was done at a time when the town plowed subdivision roads.
Which they will stop doing as soon as that road gets into any much worse of a condition than it is.
Right.
Yep. I, I have no problems with the request, especially since all of the neighborhood, neighbors are, are willing to, to go with the sidewalks and, and, uh, and we have a good replacement for the curbing to ensure that there aren't gonna be drainage or other water-related issues, so.
Okay, do you, I think you have the feedback you need?
So. So you, you'll, you'll come and just submit a revised request for waivers from?
Yes, actually.
Can work with, uh, Mr. Palmer.
He has, uh, put some correspondence together to that effect already, so.
So you can start looking for somebody to do the work, we're here again October twenty second, maybe we can vote on your request at that time. Good luck.
Thank you.
And thank you for taking the work to get it up to snout.
Well, thank you.
Josh is now in charge.
You go the training wheels right out the door.
We have a request.
Good night, Roddy.
Good night, good night, Jeff, good night, Paul, thank you. For, uh, from twenty-five Milo Road, a request for determination of an insubstantial change. Uh, they want to modify the building to enlarge the rear entrance, and I was surprised that we actually had to vote on a a building design change.
Seems, seems pretty minor to me, and I have no issue with it. Minor administrative change.
Do you know why we have to come back for a building? Just 'cause they showed it on the plan, is that the only reason?
Um, in the, um, in the de- decision from twenty sixteen, I believe, um, there was a condition that any changes, they would have to come back to the board for a determination.
Okay.
So that brings us here.
I know, 'cause it was a special building for the shrine and such, okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Any special comments?
No, pretty minor.
Is there a motion to approve the request for determination of an insubstantial change, and this would then be an administrative?
Yes.
Change?
So moved.
Second?
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay, approved for zero. Next item is Downing Place, a request for release of covenant for lots one, three, and five.
Yes, um.
How did I miss this?
There is, um, the documentation, um, they are asking, as you stated, um, a, uh, release for, uh, lots one, three, and five, um.
When was this approved? Nineteen ninety-eight? Okay.
Yeah, this is a bit of an old one.
Yes. Is there any surety that has to be done?
Um, there is, to my knowledge, there is not, um, I can check on that to be positive, um, but I do not believe that there is.
One, three, and, where's five? Where's five, is that like this? As lots one, three, and five, I see one and three on the plan, I don't see five.
Uh, that is a very good point.
I don't, so I'm happy to release lots one and three, did they mean one, two, and three, or is two already there?
I will.
Oh, I know, it's, it's, uh, one Downing Place, three Downing Place, and five Downing Place.
Ah ha, yes, yes, that's.
So maybe that's what they meant.
Yes, um, there is not anything to act on this evening, um, this was, um, uh, just a discussion, um, that if the
Release of covenant, right.
Board, uh, thought that they, uh, would act, uh, favor, uh, favorably, uh, next time, I, uh, would have that, um, for the board to act on.
So this was, I can't remember what was in the, okay, it was a covenant that was, uh,
So.
It's with the registry, so they just want a letter saying that they finalized, 'cause it was confusing, because one, one paragraph in it said that it was binding for generations to come, and then another paragraph in the covenant said that it could be released, so it was kinda confusing.
So this covenant is here, is that, there is a, uh, is it a financial, is it like a bond, or is it simply? Uh, this.
It's like an agreement, it's before my time.
No, it's just, yeah, we have the requirement to install monuments.
Right, and they didn't wanna have to do it in the beginning, right?
Yeah.
This thing does not like.
Oh, really?
The street's working well, it's just maintained well, it just doesn't have monuments.
Yes.
Once the monuments are installed or waived, the covenant can be released so that.
Uh, correct, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Is it item number four that's a problem? No lot shall be sold or conveyed, and no building shall be commenced or placed on any lot unless a release of these covenants is executed by a majority of the members of the planning board?
I'm sure we, uh.
Yep.
But I bet the houses are already there.
Yeah, they, some of yours wants to sell it, right?
Oh, yeah, so someone wants to sell their house, yeah.
And they realized, oops, we have a, uh.
Yes.
We have a little bit of a problem.
Yes, the.
So if it's just a matter of the, we've done this before, we've waived the, uh,
The monuments.
Monuments.
Yes.
So what do you want us to do tonight?
Um, to, um, uh, to give, um, an idea, I suppose, of how the board feels um, on this particular, uh, matter, and if, uh, favorably, then I'll, uh, bring the proper paperwork.
And we will sign it?
Yes.
And then you'll, okay. So does anybody have reservations about approving their request to, to forego the additional monuments, so that, and then directing staff to draw up the correct paperwork to file with the registry?
I do not, I mean, the staff, did you guys have any comments on this while reviewing it, did it was, you know?
Uh, there were none.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with it.
It's been there twenty years, if highway department had a problem, they would've let you know, right?
Yeah.
Okay, do you, so, do you need a vote?
Um, I do not.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a, there was a bond which was released back in 'oh two, so I think if there was a real major issue, they wouldn't have released that bond back then.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, the other one was released too, so. Oh, yeah, well, the other one was released too, so, back in oh two.
Yeah, right.
Okay, there you go. Next item, Jeff Bram has requested that, that we do not discuss his two items.
Yeah.
Tonight, he'd like to come back at a later time. And, uh, maybe he can provide some material before he comes back to let us know what his concerns are.
Yes, yep.
The other two items are the, uh, the zoning board of appeal is going to be discussing two requests for, uh, age restricted housing. When does their, uh, public hearing on these open?
Uh, they are on the schedule for the, uh, next zoning board, which.
Which is the third week?
I don't have, uh, a calendar in front of me, I apologize for that. Um, but they are on the, um, agenda.
Okay, um, I would like this board to provide input because I, I think it's, these desert, these require input from us.
Okay.
But I would like to have Mike Green present as well, so you can get comments from the full board. So maybe you can relay to the ZBA that, not for this one, but for their next meeting.
Mm-huh.
The, uh, planning board would like to provide input to their discussions.
There was a letter from Melissa Robbins, I saw, that got in here, so she was saying that.
Yeah. She could always come, so they, they won't be, after this one, they won't be meeting again until the third week in November.
Yes.
So we would have two opportunities before then, two, two opportunities for her to come and, and talk to us briefly.
Yeah, um, I could certainly, uh, contact her, um, after, uh, come in.
And I don't, yeah, if she, if she desires, especially after she hears the, the first hearing from the ZBA. Are you all okay with delaying the discussion?
Absolutely.
That'll give you a chance to review.
Yes, yes.
We actually have a section of our bylaws, which is for senior housing overlay district. And since these are both senior housing, I recommend that we all review that section of our bylaws. It's under special overlay districts. I think that that would be informative to compare what's in our bylaws to what they've been proposing.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else that the board wants to discuss?
That's everything for general, uh, business.
Yeah. Correspondence reports and updates?
Um, the only updates, um, that I have, um, are the, um, the department is, um, updating the, uh, website. Uh, one of the things that, uh, we are in the process of is creating a page, um, for each project. Um, so if you go to the, uh, Len Use Management, uh, page, on the left, there will be, um, a, uh, link to, um, a page that has all of the projects.
The ones under discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, um, all of the projects, uh, for the, uh, planning board and the, uh, zoning board.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, you'll be able to click on a particular project. Um, that'll bring you to a page that will have all of the, uh, documentation, um, uh, uh, maps, um, uh, things like that. Um, I don't have all of them up right now. Um, I'm in the process of, of, uh, putting those up. Um, but it will hopefully, um, enable the, uh, uh, public to be, uh, more, um, informed.
It'd be easier for them to find the information, I think that's a great idea.
Yes. Yeah, um, we are also creating an FAQ page, um, and, uh, a page explaining the overall process, um, uh, things like that, trying to, uh, make the whole process a bit easier, um, hopefully, uh, quicker.
Great.
So, uh, that is.
I know they talked before about doing a little guide on how to submit a pro- what the submittal process is and stuff.
Yep, yep.
So having it electronically will be better than paper.
Yes, yeah, yep.
Right.
The only other, uh, comment i- is there, um, the, uh, fall of twenty eighteen schedule for the, uh, Citizen Planner Training Collaborative, um, is out. Um, there are quite a few that are reasonably close by. Um, so i- if anybody on the board, uh, wants more info on those, uh, courses, um, I have the schedule here, I believe the schedule's in your packet as well.
I have taken most of them and I find, I found them useful. I need to go back and refresh myself on some of them, but, cause it was like a long time ago I took them, but.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
But they, and they do give you good material, like on special permits and variances.
Yes. Mm-huh. Yep.
They, and actually on the zoning act, they, they, it's a thick packet that they provide you.
Yep, yeah, they, uh, their courses are, uh, quite, uh, uh, good.
And you get reimbursed?
Yes, they are thirty-five dollars apiece, but the, uh, department and, and, uh, will certainly, uh, reimburse you for that.
Yeah.
I may do that.
Great.
Yeah, especially if it's close, like Hable, I know.
Yeah.
Did you have anything? I saw you just looking.
Uh, well, on the seventeenth of October, Wednesday night, the NIMCO annual meeting is going to be held at the Tuxbury Country Club, so I'll be going. There's a dinner, there's a, Eileen Donahue is going to be the guest speaker, so, um.
I will be in sunny New Mexico.
I will be, I will be in attendance.
I did have a question, cause I was at the, um, Board of Selectmen meet, the last Board of Selectmen meeting. And I know there's going to be, I think it's a warrant article requesting funding from the Board of Health for monitoring, uh, Newport materials, the asphalt plant.
Oh, yeah.
Which made me think, we have not received an update on the automatic monitoring, how that's going. So we should probably have that as a disc-.
I can check on that.
We should have a discussion item on that, um, cause the last we heard was last year, they were having some issues getting the equipment installed. But we never got an update on how the testing went or anything, if it's actually in operation now.
Okay.
And I'm curious to know when whoever, Selectmen and, uh, Town Manager pick the date for the Fall Town Meeting. Because I want to write a letter to them before that time saying, please, next in two thousand nineteen, do not put it on the night when we're having a planning board meeting. I've, I've asked that, them to not do it in the past.
Oh, yeah?
And I just, I just want to get it there at the right time this time.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
So I guess my question, well, so the town meeting is?
Special town meeting does not have a requirement for when it is, that's up to the Selectmen to determine the date.
Right. But that's coming right up on the fifteenth, right?
Yeah, so for this year, we're stuck, that's why our meeting got moved to the twenty second.
Right, so we've got that asphalt issue, so if you're not going to be there, right?
Yeah, so somebody, I'm sure the question will come up.
So, someone's going to say, well, isn't that part of the settlement?
Yeah, yeah.
That Newport pays for all that stuff, so I guess that's my question, I guess I can ask Jeff.
Yeah, I did, I wasn't, I had to leave, so I didn't actually hear the discussion, but you can always listen to the, watch cat.
Off from the Board of Selectmen meeting.
Yeah, I, it'll be like an hour and a half into the meeting.
Okay. All right.
Okay, you got anything else?
Yep.
Is there a motion, do you have anything, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.